I call the Osage County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, November 4th to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, roll call. We have Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cooter, and are you deputy clerk?
Yes.
And deputy clerk, Tempest Harrison.
The deputy clerk.
All right, additions or deletions? It looks like we're needing to add payroll. And then we've got some fund balances that reports, which I, we're gonna call Linda, she's just gonna give, she said she didn't have a lot to report, but I told her we've got these reports.
Okay.
She'll just kinda tell us about that. And then I had a question about some AP reports.
Okay.
And Linda's on there. I'm gonna add an IT discussion.
Under new business? Or old, or whatever?
I'm just gonna put IT under unfinished business.
Okay.
And then, the item with Pay Corps recommendation for payroll dates, that was just a follow-up from our conversation last week. I don't know if Michelle sent any information with you in regards to that?
I don't have anything.
Okay, then we need to remove that Pay Corps.
Okay.
Can you add that to next week's?
Yep.
And let's see, anything else?
I have the two POs for the Treasurers' Office.
Okay, let me see what I've got. Okay, and we don't need an extra executive session, so I think, let me check one other thing. Oh, one question for you, do we have any update information on open enrollment for health insurance?
Just, sorry, do you know where they have J and N at, working elections?
I do not. Do you have Michelle's contact information?
For what?
Her contact information, for Michelle?
No.
Okay. I can get it to you, give me just a moment.
Okay. Does your wife have her phone number there?
Yeah, I've been texting her, she wants to text.
Technical difficulties, smooth sailing, it's just another Monday here. Heather, I'm checking, but I don't, I'm gonna see if she was actually wanting on the agenda or if she was just, I don't know, she hasn't said.
Okay, can I give it to you, I'm the caller?
Yes.
Okay. You can call Michelle.
Anyway, Michelle briefly stated this about the dates for open enrollment, and have we heard anything of when?
I have not heard anything, I do know it's supposed to be open at some point this week.
Okay, but we have, that email hasn't been sent out?
No.
There's some sort of an email and then people will just self, it's gonna be self-service, like signing up?
Yep, yeah, and that email has not went out.
Okay. As soon as, whatever their information gets put into state system, then the state automatically will, should send out an email to everybody to.
And is there a contact person that if people are working on the portal and just have problems or whatever, is there going to be a contact person to talk to someone?
Um, as of right now, I would say it's probably going to be Michelle, beyond that, I don't know.
Okay.
On the, on the website, there's, there's AI help, and then there's like two or three different physical numbers to call, and there's a lot of videos, it's pretty.
As long as there's a contact number for people?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, then I would say.
Yeah, I was nervous about that, 'cause I thought this, you know, oh, the 30-day enrollment, and I was nervous and that.
Well, and then we did get that email saying that there will be.
Yeah.
And I, and it's early November, and so.
So yeah, it's 30 days after they get the email.
Yeah, you're kinda pushing it.
I was scared there to start with, real scared.
Okay, and, do you have anything else besides the POs from the Treasurers' Office?
I do not.
Okay, and do you have anything, Brandon?
Uh, not at this moment, Heather.
Then I would need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. All right, so with the IT, do you wanna try and call Les? CP's available.
Hey, Les, you, you all right? Yeah, I was gonna see if you're available for a little phone call for a little while here.
Uh, yeah, I'm just getting into my other truck, I had to take my truck, it's gear off, now it's broke down.
Well, you're running about the same speed we are today, so.
Yeah, but I've got a deployment here in about 20, 25 minutes.
20, 25 minutes, perfect.
Head that way, and I'll mail a phone with you.
Okay, all right, I'll put you on speaker here, if I find the right button. How about now?
I'm here.
Very good.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so, I had a couple items, texting back and forth with Josh, he wasn't available to be here today.
Yeah, he left me there last night.
Yeah, so, the two items that I, he had reached out about, he said we don't need to do an executive session, so I thought we could do those. And then he just, from our discussion, wants us to give him direction on what to do. So in regards to IT, I know we've been discussing what we may be doing with Century, and after last week's meeting, I, I did reach out to Sonny, and he said he would be available to help, if we transition away from Century, he would be available to help with that. And so, and then moving into whatever may come, you know, after that, he'd be available for discussions and guidance and things like that. So, basically Josh is needing to know if we're wanting to end our contract with Century, we just would need to give him directive if we want him to send that email to let them know that. So what are your thoughts on him doing that?
So, I think everybody knows my thought, yes, I would like to move away from a bank. I would like to have Sam as the main point of contact, and then let Sonny lend a hand if other offices want him. I know most all the offices are using Sam anyway, and he has a real good handle on everything, so my recommendation would be to move forward with Sam and have Josh draft a letter for review if he hasn't already drafted it.
What are your thoughts? I have the opposite view.
Well, I don't know, at this time, are we needing to make a decision either way on, as far as?
Yeah, I think we need to have a point man, and I think we need to get the situation rolling, 'cause it's November, and I believe that was an annual contract, that should've went from 31st to the first, or first to 31st, hang on. So, I think we need to get something going sooner than later, so I would move that we approve Josh to draft the letter for review to Century, terminating services, and move forward with Sam as master of Helix Technologies as point man, with Sonny assisting in the transition.
In that, you're suggesting that we accept the, his proposal that he gave last week, or?
What's that?
Are you suggesting that we, on, on Helix Technologies, you're saying we, we accept that proposal that he, that he gave last week?
Yeah.
I have not. Right now, the thing Josh mainly wants is about Century, and then kinda working through the transition of Century leaving, and then the next step is a separate step. But for me, my opinion, after talking to Sonny, he does know our system inside and out for the, so many years he's been here. And it was suggested last week to having Sonny as the main point person and Sam working alongside of him through the transition, just to do an assessment, see where we're at, and then at that point, determine how we wanna move forward. So I, I would like to see that process.
Well, I've got a, for lack of discussion today, I mean, with you not being here and everything, how about I just, how about I move that we allow Josh to go forward with writing the letter to Century, and then with knowing that Sonny and Sam are both available, we'll be able to move forward with that in the future? As a compromise for today, just to get the ball rolling, I mean.
Right, because they have to get in here and, yeah, when I talk to.
We need a point man, someone that's gonna be the, the go-to, that reports stuff, and lets us know the communication, but, I mean, I'm fine with the compromise, I'll second that motion.
All right.
What, sorry, Tempest?
I'm, I'm good.
Sorry, if you'll make the motion, so she can.
Okay.
I don't know if you heard all that.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Oh yeah, so the motion was, the, that I suggested was to go, allow Josh to go forward in drafting a letter and sending communication with Century, as, as far as the end of their contract, and the, the intent to switch over?
And then that would give directive to Sonny and Sam to get started when it comes to assessing.
Right, that, yeah, 'cause.
Our current situation, and then how we move forward. Sonny thought it might take a handful of days to kinda see where we're at with everything.
Right, yeah, I don't know what that looks like on Century Link's, I mean, on Century's end, I don't know what they look like as far as.
What that process.
Handing off the baton looks like, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we need to start that, I'm sure, I'm sure of that part. I don't know much, but I know that much.
Okay, so that was the motion, he seconded it.
Does that sound right, Les, you still on that?
Uh, yeah, I seconded your motion to move forward with the letter for Century, and then to have Sam and Sonny work together on the transition.
Yep.
That's what he said, right?
Yeah, yeah, you just said it way shorter than I did.
Okay, so there's, there's a second, so, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Yeah, and I recognize what both of you are saying, that we probably ought to have a discussion on a point person, or whoever you wanna call, I mean, whatever you call it, yeah.
Okay, then the other discussion was Josh's, last week, when we discussed, once we talked about that we're hiring BT and Co. for their contracting services, he's gonna send out an email to the department heads, just kind of as a brief overview of, kind of about them and what their services are gonna be, and, and then we do have a department head meeting set for the 18th in a couple weeks, and so, he said just need guidance on what to tell department heads, or he can just do a plain email informing them of BT and Co.
Well, at this point, it's my recommendation, he does a plain email informing everybody about them, and they're mainly gonna be working in one office anyway, and we have the AP with Linda working on that, so my recommendation would be to assist Michelle in whatever she needs to help in, from what I'm being told, it's payroll mainly, so if they can get in and look through it, and just kind of assist with, you know, what's going on right now, you know, we're off to the end of the year, I know change order, or change over has been going pretty good, they did confirm that W2s were correct and things like that, so I think at this point, they need to be in there where needed.
It also says that BT and Co. may be reaching out to them for needed information, so it sounds like he was kinda wanting to include that. For me, when I discuss information with BT and Co., it's actually kind of a two-pronged approach, one is payroll, and one is AP, and then they're kind of the project lead on assessing everything and giving recommendations, on just getting everything caught up, cleaned up, and then moving forward with, you know, kind of new processes and procedures and things. procedures and things, um, but anyway, the, kind of the contract that we signed, giving that information out, so they can kind of see. I do have people still reaching out to me about the voucher program, and if we're getting back to that, I know that's been mentioned, um, so, I think there's a lot of conversations we had, but I think just a general email to let them know about the company, and then the department head meeting, we can delve a little bit more into some things and answer some of their questions. So it sounds like just keeping the email general about what their services are.
Yes, because I think it's foolish to interrupt Linda right now, um, and she is gonna have an update, I talked with her a little bit about that too, just to make sure, uh, she brings an update to us, you know, where they're at in AP, what's caught up, where they're headed. I know that they've already started a couple, uh, processes that have been working on getting bills paid and caught up, so, um, at this point, we need an update from Linda, and then tackle the other elephants in the room with payroll.
Okay. Alright, so I'll, I'll send him back here, or I'll email him a little bit later, or send him a text back, so. Um, I think that was kind of the main two items to discuss as a whole, so, you know, if you want to stay on the phone, you can, if you're needing to go, we've got a couple other items.
Yeah, I'm almost to my appointment, I got a few more minutes here, but.
Okay.
Um, if there's something else you want to talk about, or have me involved in, then, yeah, I got a few minutes here. Just keep on rolling down the list, whatever you want to do.
Alright, alright, if you want to do those POs.
Man, you're efficient, Les, that's all I know.
That's the whole goal, that's how you save tax for your dollar. I had seven projects last week.
One for each day, huh?
Uh, well, I wish it was that way.
Oh.
Seven for every day. But they're all, they're all smaller projects, and you've got, you know, guys that need to run, so. It worked out good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, those look good.
You get those, okay.
Yep, those look good.
Alright, so, I've got two different ones here. I would move to approve purchase order number four-one-one-four, to be paid to Navrats from the Treasure Tech Fund. I'm not sure what it's for, it said, oh, it says a treasurer's desk, um, in the amount of two thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second?
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And did you guys get, I know Chris Wells has kind of requested a executive session, but with Josh not, is he even available by phone? He just told me he wasn't gonna be there, I don't know if he said he's gonna be available by phone. If he's not available, we should probably wait on that one.
Yeah, I don't know for sure, um, I haven't heard from Chris, and I, the last I heard Josh said he may or may not be available, uh, he, he, he wasn't, he wasn't gonna vouch for it, either way.
Okay, well, I may reach out to Chris then and just kind of let him know that's what's going on.
Yeah, I'm.
Because I think Josh, Josh needs to be in attendance for that one.
Uh, okay, so the second purchase order, purchase order number four-one-one-five, uh, is to key staffing from the treasurer's office, fund number zero-zero-one-zero-three-five-two-zero-zero. Is that a commodities or contractual?
I believe it's commodities.
Okay, oh, it's probably gotta be contractual, because it's for Rita Crouch. Work end date, she must have finished up with key staffing on ten-twenty-five, in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixteen cents.
Is that a motion? Second?
Yes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And to, uh, to that statement there, I want everybody to realize that the department heads should be coding that and calling it out what it is. It's not our job to decide if it's contractual or, uh, whatever. We need to get into that, get our people into that practice.
Yeah.
Because that's gonna make, that's gonna streamline everything and make it more efficient. They know better than we do where it should be coming from.
Right, that's the, that's, yeah, that's.
Yes, however, you know.
Yeah, I just, I don't know the numbers, so if it's numbers, I'm like, oh, is that commodities or contractual? I don't, I don't know them by numbers.
Yeah, you're definitely correct on that, Les, though, that's the, uh, that's the master plan, I think.
Alright.
Good, good.
Okay, do you have the, uh, liquor license approval?
Right there.
Okay.
Is that one for?
This is for Club Four Corners?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay. Here's this. Okay, so I would move to approve a, what is this called? Serial malt beverage license for Lisa Jolly of Club Four Corners, for the twenty-twenty-six year.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Um, Les?
Can I get Les to see?
It has your name to sign, but, uh, she called me and asked if I would physically bring this to her today, so, do you want them to use your stamp?
Yes.
Okay, can you, I, I have to take this with me today.
I approve Tempest to stamp the liquor license for Club Four Corners.
I'll get a stamped and copy to bring it back down to you.
Yeah, I'll, if I just, I need to take that with me today. She had called and asked if I'd bring it to her.
It's probably a good thing you weren't here last, Tempest was talking mad smack on you earlier.
Oh, man, I'm huge, Jeff.
Okay, so are you wanting on the agenda? Okay, so I'm going to move to, um, amend the agenda. Removing Chris Wells', uh, executive session, he said he doesn't need it this week, he's out of town.
Okay.
And then to add, um, Jackie Patterson with the Health Department, is this new or unfinished business? Under new business for? Vax, so a PO.
Yeah.
Um, adding Jackie Patterson with the Health Department for a PO.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Alright, I am now reached my next destination for my next appointment, and so I will have to review at this point.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move that off. Okay, Jackie, if you'd like to.
Did I really hang up, or did I think I hung up?
Oh, Lord, whatever.
Again, haven't we bought multiple of these?
So, yes.
Like, we buy them, and then they break down, or something happens, and we lose vaccine?
The vaccine refrigerators didn't break down, we lost vaccine, that was the generator. Um, the purchases we've made recently have been completely paid for with grant funding, and that was a freezer, and then we also purchased a refrigerator-freezer combination. Those have been purchased within the last five years and four years, less than that.
Since I've been here, because I remember multiple.
Yes, the one that we need to replace is the oldest one we have, and of course, it is out of warranty now. Um, so, it has not been keeping up. We, um, have had to transfer vaccine out of this, or we don't have this vaccine.
Moving it to the other, yeah.
So it is in our backup refrigerator, which then, of course, leaves us without a backup refrigerator. So we need to purchase another refrigerator for our main, um, and I've got some quotes, um, and then I have the one that I would like, which is not the lowest.
And it's a refrigerator or a freezer?
It's a refrigerator.
Okay, and then what do we do with the old one?
It needs to go by.
It's like dump, like throw away, it's not fixable? Nobody would want it?
Uh, well, I can't say that, because I'm not a refrigeration person. Um, I don't know what is wrong with it. We've had somebody come and look at it, and it just doesn't really seem to make sense. So we don't really know, we've replaced two fans in it already, um, so we've already spent about a thousand dollars or more trying to fix it.
Did you say it's out of warranty? Okay.
Of course.
Yeah, perfect, that's, that's why we run to failure, that's what we like.
So probably just be hauled off to the?
Probably, unless we want to put it in, in storage, and somebody might buy it. I mean, it's a really nice refrigerator, as far as that goes.
But it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will say that, it does work, it just doesn't keep it to the cooling standards that we have to have it at, it's.
Good enough to keep your night crawlers in, but not.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is that. So with that, I have some that I've looked up. Um, they range in price from the lowest being four thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars, the highest being some oddly amount, I don't even know how it is this much, for twelve thousand two hundred and six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'm like, oh, wow, you guys are big up there. The one on top is the one that I like the most, because we already have a unit of the same brand, and this is, it's a smaller refrigerator than the one we currently have, but it's plenty big enough for what we have, I was looking at around twenty cubic inches for the whole thing, that's what all of these are, it's around that same size. But this one is more of a side-by-side style, so it's easier to get in and out of, blah, 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 whatever. It's the ultimate base. Also, to let you know, I am working on getting grant funding. Um, so far, I have not found anything that fits for all of it. Um, the most I've found is gonna be a little bit over two thousand dollars, but it's.
That's, that's nothing to sniff at.
So I am working and trying to get some grant money towards it. One way or another, it will still have to be reimbursed money, so we still will have to pay for it upfront. And then it will be reimbursed whatever grant money I can get.
Okay.
How quick a trigger are you needing on this?
I need it as soon as possible, I mean, the state doesn't like it when you don't have a backup.
I'm sure of that, yeah, I'm, yeah.
Now, that being said, we do still have our old backup refrigerator, because nobody's ever come and bought it, it's still sitting in our closet, so if worst came to worst, we could plug that in and hook all of the accoutrements up to it, monitor its temperature, and say we have a backup refrigerator again, if we need to do that, we can do that. But I would prefer to get a backup refrigerator, back-up refrigerator in there, um, just, uh, you know.
I'm assuming these have, and maybe I'm ignorant, but, are these have like real-time monitoring, where they give you, where you can, uh, give you alerts or something or other?
Yes, um, I don't know what those in particular do, simply because I was trying not to spend as much money, because we don't need it. Um, we actually have units that we purchased with grant money that can do that.
Gotcha.
And then, because we are enrolled in a DFC program through the state, we are required to have, um, data loggers, which are similar, they don't transmit it to us, but it gets transmitted, and we download the information, and it is recorded, I mean, we have to take the temperatures quite a day, every day, and blah, blah, so, um, but yes. That's kind of a long way of saying that.
I, yeah, I got the same problem. I try to say yes, and it ends up being a, yeah, a little.
So what, what's your, what do you have against yet?
I haven't done anything, because I didn't know which one you guys wanted. I mean, we can go with the cheapest one, which there's nothing wrong with it. Um, like I say, it's about the same size, it's a different brand than I've tried before, right?
There we go, there we go.
PCBI is what our current backup refrigerator, freezer is. We've had zero problems with it, of course, it's also less than two years old.
It's how old is this one? The one we're replacing?
I believe five to six years, so not very old. It's pretty terrible that it, but the, um, I did look at the, uh, warranty, and most of these are one to two years, and then they'll have a separate, uh, warranty on the compressor, which this one is five, so it's just out. And I don't know that it's a compressor anymore, the compressor doesn't seem to be having any trouble. I, I feel like I said, I don't know what is wrong, it just won't work.
Murphy's Law.
Well, if we keep a fan on it, it'll stay cool.
What?
So, you tell me.
Okay.
But I can't rely on it, and so.
Yeah. Well, so that one, I mean, the, the mid, or whatever you want to call it, uh.
Yeah, one of them is a side-by-side style.
Yeah. Yeah, it says, uh, so, three-year parts and labor.
Which is better than the Magali, I will say that. Magali was one year.
Yeah.
Maybe over two years, parts, provided they covered the parts, and five-year compressor, compressor, but it didn't cover paper.
Yeah, oh.
And they usually try, um, and get you to do a refurbished.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Locking, yeah, two locking sliding glass doors, visual and audible alarms, adjustable shelves. It's on casters, you can roll it around, it says.
Mm-hmm, yeah, all of them are, that makes it very handy when you have to move them.
Do you know what delay time, what, on this stuff?
They're all gonna be different, I'm gonna guess it'll be at least two weeks. Some of them might be more than that.
Yeah.
Um, but I would guess at least two.
Yeah, we just ordered a couple things, a Waterworld, we got one right away, because they had it in, in stock, and the next one's like next year.
Is that what it's called, is Waterworld?
Well, I don't know what else to call it, Water and Waste Waterworld.
Is that the name of the company?
No, it's just, that's what my, that's the operat, that's where my realm is, and so.
Um, and I'm not sure if that quote has it on that thing, it does, um, but the delivery has to be, they bring it in, and they set it up, so it does cost a little bit for the delivery.
Estimated charge requires a forty-six inch dock, products left at your dock.
Well, that's if you don't want to bring it in, that's why we have to pay the extra, because they will leave it on your front step. They did that over late, and I snuck on my camera, if you come in and figure out how to get it inside.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's great.
What's your recommendation?
Well, yeah, I would have a hard time explaining why we'd need the two Cadillac models here, either of those two, you know.
Yeah, those really, those are, comparing apples to apples, I don't really see why they are that much more expensive.
Yeah, I mean, double, more than double. So that, the one you like, I think, is that one, is that?
Yeah, the one on the.
That one's fifty-nine, the cheapest one's thirty-seven.
Well, when you add the, all the other stuff to it, it puts up a little bit more, but yes.
Oh, yes.
And you're thinking, best case scenario, we're, I mean, almost a sure bet, you're saying we'll get a couple thousand dollars worth of.
Yes, I have spoken with the grant, and it looks like that's gonna be something we can do.
Yeah.
Bring it more, I will, but I.
Sure.
I'm pretty sure it's gonna be.
You're not gonna say, oh, we're definitely getting this all reimbursed?
No, I think it will. Um, at least I haven't been able to find those funds yet, but I think there's probably around two thousand, twenty-one hundred dollars, something more than that amount that we should be able to get through.
So if you can do the grant, and then I would say, just sell it, and anything you can get from selling it, combine those two, and hopefully pay for.
A chunk of it, a big chunk of it. I mean, it's not like, this is one of those things where we don't really get to say, oh, no, we're not doing it ever, I mean.
Well, there may be somebody that's interested in that fridge, that Magali refrigerator.
Oh, yeah, it's a commercial fridge.
It's not a cheap refrigerator.
Yeah.
I'm glad we had the grant funds back then to pay for this house.
When we sell items like that, how do we advertise that to hopefully get a buyer?
Well, they usually kind of collect things and then have an auction, that's how they used to do it, I don't know how to do it now.
I was hoping maybe you had some connections within the.
I do have a friend.
Healthcare world.
Not the healthcare world, because this isn't gonna make anybody in the healthcare world happy right now. Um, but I do know somebody that buys and sells and does appliances, and that might be something that they would be interested in, maybe they can fix it, and then they can resell it.
Might be, yeah.
I would say, sure, I, my recommendation is try selling it and get whatever we can out of it.
Yeah, yeah, as an aside.
No sense letting it sit in a closet, just.
Well, this one is too big for my closet. The other one was much smaller, um, and I would, I'll go talk to brands and see if we can, I, I will go. The other one was much smaller. Um, and I would, I'll go talk to brands and see if we can, I, I don't know where it needs to go. I, I don't know.
Surely we can find a spot to hide it for...
I mean, it's, it's a big unit.
I'll bring my son in, we'll help out. He'll move it. He'll pick it up.
Well, I sure, I sure can.
All right, so we need a motion today. You wanna...
Yeah, that would be...
You would like, do you have a, a fund idea or whatever that you could?
Would be, uh, what is it called? A capital outlay.
Capital outlay? And then we'll just wait and see what the grant monies are later on the back end. I mean, we can't really put that within the motion really, can we?
Uh, no, because I don't need that amount.
Yeah.
What I would do is write the purchase, because we have to buy it anyway, so I would write the purchase order for the entire amount, because that's what it's going to be. And then when we get grant funds, it'll just go into, back into the account.
Yeah.
Should we have one of those?
This is gonna be, so do you want me to do this one that I like, or do you want me to do this cheaper one, which, again, I, it really doesn't matter that much?
It's, the difference on there i- is not, I mean, was less than...
Well, it's, it's two thousand dollars.
Right, yeah, but I mean, that's the grant. I mean, I mean, it's...
So, this, the, the one that's more expensive, it's basically six thousand dollars. And I'm gonna add some to it, because like I said, I need to, it needs to have the, basically, so this one is seven hundred and twenty dollars just for the delivery. So I would say you would need to add at least that much to this one, probably about seven hundred dollars, since it's already seventy-five for a liftgate charge. Um, so if you say you're gonna, say, just add a thousand dollars, that's gonna make it sixty-nine, seventy-one. Do you want me to do that, or do you want me to do this other one, and it would be forty-four, sixty-one?
I'd hate for you to get something you didn't like.
Well, I can't say I'm not gonna like it. I'm just saying it's...
Is it just 'cause it's the same brand?
It's becau-, no, there's two reasons. It's because it's the same brand and because it's not just one door. It's got the sliding doors. It just makes it a little easier when we put the vaccine in to look and see what it is and to separate that. But, I mean, they are...
I'll go by your guidance. When I always look at stuff, I'm like, what do we need? No bells and whistles.
Right.
So you have to tell me if those two, what category. Like, I want you to get what you need.
Oh, yeah, but I, and I've done that, and I bought something that was like, and like she's talking about the doors, like, well, I can't, this is stupid. The door bumps into that, you know? And you don't know it until you put it in there, like, oh, that's a terrible idea.
Right.
But it sounds like you've, you've got plenty of experience with vaccine refrigerators, so...
Well, the other thing I was looking at was warranty. This one, the cheaper one, is two-year parts and labor.
Yeah.
Plus an additional three-year compressor parts. The more expensive one has three-year parts and labor, is all it says.
Yeah.
I mean, so I don't know that that's really a lot different either. So, I mean, I, I mean, I, I, I think, I actually don't know for a hundred percent, but I think we should have the funds to cover the more expensive one. Um, in the past, we've always had a pretty significant, um, excess on our books, so...
And I, I don't remember you, us doing, or you doing anything out of the ordinary. I mean, we haven't done anything...
No, I mean, this year's been the most out of the ordinary because of the generator failure.
Right, yeah. Right, but then you get the grant.
We were able to cover it.
Grant, yeah, yeah, so...
What'd we do with the old generator? Did we sell it?
Oh, I didn't take it.
I don't know what they did, um, but...
Who's they?
Uh, whoever put it in, I wasn't actually here when they delivered it.
Who put it into station? Like, I thought that was supposed to be sold.
I don't recall, but yeah, it would've been nice. Or repurpose, we talked about it one time, repurposing it for another building.
It's almost a hundred percent complete. We've got the gas line in and everything, and now they're just gonna be coming in, making sure, doing all the load testing and all of that stuff, so...
Very good.
Well, I, if it's okay with you, I would do the PCB yard, which is the middle of the road one. And if we can say seven thousand dollars would be no more than...
Not to exceed?
Yes. And that would allow a thousand dollars for delivery and setup, which should be a handful.
Sure, yeah, that sounds great. Are you gonna write that all out, so I can...
I sure will.
So I don't stumble through it?
I will, uh...
See how I did that?
Let's see.
You know what is nice about when Jackie stops by here, though? She's always talking about needing money on things, but she always gives you that glimmer of hope of saying, well, there's grant money out there and there's something I can do about this.
I try.
Yeah. So it's not all gloom and doom, and I appreciate that. Yeah. And I suppose if you run into some big snags, when you start contacting them, you know, just, we can revisit it, you know?
In the past, they have been really accommodating. And in some cases, when they find out we're a health department, they actually give us another discount. And I haven't talked extensively with them.
Right, this is just the flyover.
This is just, yeah, sending it in and trying to get folks on these as fast as I can, so...
Perfect. See, see, more good news. There's more hope.
I can, I can try and talk them into giving us a better deal, but we'll see. Okay, so this is...
You should be one of those motivational speakers.
Yeah, my TED Talk. All right, that's for you, and then I'm gonna put in a few more details when that's...
All right. I move that we approve the purchase order number three-nine-five-three, um, for the PHCBI Pharmaceutical Refrigerator and the amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars, uh, from the Health Capital Outlay Fund.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Only other request I would have is if you can get stuff on the agenda, so that way it's official. Do you have the link?
Yes, I sent it.
Okay.
I, I, I didn't know about this until after the weekend.
Okay.
Um, and I sent an email and I sent in a, you know, the...
Do you get a confirmation email?
Yes, and I did.
Because I've had times I've added stuff to the agenda, and there was a button at the bottom, that sometimes on my screen, if I don't scroll down, there's a, you have, there's a button you have to, there's another one you have to hit. And I think I've sent stuff in, and then I'm like, why is that? Well, then I go back and look for the reimburse, or the email, and I realize I didn't get a confirmation. And so I've realized there's sometimes at the bottom of the screen, there's another button you have to press. If you don't hit that second submit button, it, you're not, and so anyway, I've done that, and I'm like, it's easy to do, so, but anyway, if, what we can get on the agenda is best. Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, so we got that. So the last, we're gonna call Linda for an update. I had some questions about, there's some reports on our desk. And then, uh, get an update from her, and then we'll do bills and payroll.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
All right, so.
Hello.
Hi Linda, this is Heather. How are you?
Hi. I'm good.
Hey. Okay, so we are to the agenda, down to your item. I had a couple of questions. One is, we have a, a fund status report and a composition of cash balances. I know you visited about this last week. Um, so my question is with the reports, is it, is there anything specific we need to be looking at on here?
Uh, I highlighted the total, the comp and cash, uh, grand total, and the fund status grand total, and those are, those match. So this is the first time in about five years or more...
Okay.
That these have matched.
Okay.
So now we are, now we are, as far as these two reports, as far, at this moment in time, as far as what we have in our system, in banking, and in the funds, they match together.
Okay, and this...
Which is what we're supposed to do every single day.
Right, and this includes all the agency funds and everything, right, as I'm looking through this big report, the fund?
Yeah, yeah, all the funds.
Okay.
Everything.
Does that...
All the cash and CDs and investments and, and all the funds.
Okay, does that balance seem low, or for this time of year, is that about right? Or do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I mean, that's just, that's...
And when it says beginning balance, is that beginning, yeah, so the beginning balance of the thirty million was from one-one. I see the from dates now, one-one to ten-twenty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, because it started at thirty, and then we had fifty-three million receipts, sixty-four dispersments, and then we're down to nineteen, so I don't know if that's...
I, I, I mean, I ran, I haven't, I didn't actually compare that with whatever prior years were.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
But, uh, the other thing to think about on that is that those bank accounts are not reconciled for twenty-twenty-five or twenty-four.
Right.
So there's, so the banks are probably, the actual true bank account, that is not, that's the CIC bank balance. It's not the bank statement balance.
Correct, and that all gets corrections, if, when you're reconciling, if you find things that need to be corrected, that's when it all gets adjusted?
The true bank balance is probably two or three, two or three million dollars less.
Okay. Okay, uh, thank you on that. Anything else we need to know on those?
No, I'm just going to, uh, we got the November fourth AP run done. Uh, I've got a, I did, if you wanna let the department heads know, I have a, I put up a little basket and a notice on the desk, on the AP desk in the clerk's office. And I let them know what the due dates for the AP invoices are and what the check dates will be.
And that information's where?
It's, uh, I have a little placard set up, and it's on the AP desk in the clerk's office.
Okay, do you know that's been sent out to them at all?
Uh...
The information?
I know, I know that, uh, I know some of them have it. I would assume they all got it. But they, what they actually got was the notice that said, you know, the AP invoices are due by noon on the, I don't know, first and third Mondays. And the checks are gonna be written on the second and fourth Mondays or something like that. Just a generic kinda thing. I put dates on there. Through the end of the year. So like, uh, like invoices are due, I don't have it in front of me. Um, the dates would be like, okay, so the tenth is the deadline. Noon, noon on Monday, the tenth, is the deadline for all invoices. If you want them to be paid on the eighteenth, you have to have all your invoices into the clerk's office by noon at, on the tenth.
Okay, well, as long as that's been, you know, sent out to everybody, so that they're...
Yeah.
Seeing that. I mean, they, I mean, I'm guessing if they come in, they might see the note on the desk, but...
Yeah.
I think if that's sent to all the department heads, they can, uh, give that information to whoever works on that in their department.
Yeah, I just wanted to put full dates on there, so people aren't confused about what's the first and third, or the second and fourth, or whatever. On Thursday, I'm going over to the sheriff's office and telling them how to do their own AP invoices. So they'll be doing their own AP matches.
Okay, sounds good.
And next, next week on the tenth, I will be working, I've got to go to Mulvane and be there with my grandkids while their folks are home. And so I'm gonna work from Mulvane. And so what I really want to take that opportunity to do is to be working on the twenty-twenty-four, uh, e- end-of-year stuff. I was hoping to get that done that week. Because I will have, hopefully, less interruptions.
Take care of your grandkids?
What?
You're gonna have less interruptions taking care of your grandkids?
Well, yeah, they're in school.
Oh, okay. I thought they were littles. Okay, okay.
No, no, they're in school, so...
Okay.
So, yeah, during the day, I will have less interruptions.
Okay, yeah, and then also next week, our meeting is on the twelfth, which is a Wednesday, because Tuesday is Veterans Day.
Oh, okay.
FYI on that, so...
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll be available by phone, and I will have my laptop, so I can join, you know, like if the treasurer's office needs anything.
Right.
But, um, I'm hoping to get all the AP invoices done this week, and then whatever comes in on Monday, uh, Michelle will need, Michelle can enter those.
Okay. Um, and has the treasurer needed any of your help? I know originally, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about dividing some of your services, you know, kinda fifty-fifty, depending on what the treasurer's...
I worked there all day, yesterday till about three, three or three-thirty.
Okay, so she's reaching out for things?
Over there, just as things come up that Becky may have questions about, then, you know, we address those as she has them.
Okay.
So...
Sounds good.
So whatever, so whatever, you know, she needs, I can, I'm just a phone call away or whatever. But I did spend, you know, from, uh, most of the day over there, and then at three, three-thirty, I went over to clerk's office and finished the AP run.
Okay, and in regards to AP, uh, one of the reports, the reports that we get for our bills is the APLT-ten. It's an invoice by vendor. Um, I would like, I, I really need one by department, so I've reached out to CIC. They said there's one that's an APLT-twenty-four-A, which is in the same...
APLT-twenty-four-A?
Twenty-four-A. So they said that if you print that, or if you print, you can print it at the same time that the APLT-ten's being printed, so I did send Michelle that, uh, there was two reports they said that could be ran, so Tempest said sometimes you run the, the report for us, sometimes it's Michelle. But if you're running it for us for when we're doing bills, if you'll add the twenty-four-A, I would greatly appreciate.
I don't have that. I'll write that down, but that doesn't sound right, because, uh, the, the reports are available, if you think about it, there's like a, like a, a, a level. And batch invoices are level one, and the APLT-twenty-four, so the batch invoice, you know what, I need to just look at that.
Okay.
You said APLT-twenty-four?
Yeah.
Divide apart.
It's under, on the AP tab under invoices, there's like the APLT-ten, eleven, thirteen, and then there's one that says open invoice report. And when you go in there, there's a whole bunch, and the twenty-four-A is in that.
Reports are at this next level. We're not there yet.
Yeah, so that's the one they said that you could run at the same time you're, when you do that ten or whatever.
No, you can't. No, that's not right. That's not true. Uh, when you are, if you wanna run the AP, the open invoice report, you have to approve all of the invoices and move up a level. So a- at different levels, you can run different reports. So they cannot be in batch invoices. If you want to, an open invoice report, then all the batch invoices have to be approved and moved up to the next level. At that point, then, you cannot get the APLT-ten anymore, but you could probably get the APLT-twenty-four. So those reports are available, depending on what level you're at.
Okay.
So as long as you're willing to move up to that next level, then that's fine. You can get that other report, but you won't be getting the batch-ten report if you like that one.
Uh, well, for me, the...
Or you don't like it?
Yeah, the ten really has never really worked well for me. That's just the one that, I don't know, last year was what it got started, but the, the APLT-twenty-four would put it by department, which makes it a whole lot easier to, for me to read, so. But it still leaves a, it still leaves an open invoice, I think, uh, so. Anyway, that was just something I was gonna ask about.
And see what, how that, how you guys are, yeah, I'll talk to Michelle. We'll look at that.
Okay. Uh, Brandon, do you have any questions for her?
Uh, the only questions I'd have would be, uh, kind of a big, general, broad concern about how, how we're paying, uh, Linda's contract out. How we're dividing up the time between departments. Is it all getting billed to one department? Is it just coming out of a general fund? I can't remember how we had that set up to begin with, and then...
For what? Brandon, I, I...
Oh, sorry, to pay your con, to pay your contract, how, how are we paying that? Is it, are we dividing up the time between two offices, or are we just pulling it out of... Is it, are we dividing up the time between two offices, or are we just pulling it out of a general fund?
Uh, actually, it's coming out of the treasurer's, uh, treasurer's, it's coming out of the treasurer's line item.
Okay.
I can't remember whether it's contract, contractual, or personnel.
Sure, well, I was just, I was trying to think, big overview and, and say, you know, uh, if you're spending, how we divide that up between the two offices, so. But that'd be on our end, probably, to figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the first, this first, this first, you know, eighteen months or so that I've been there, I've been, uh, definitely proportionally higher in the treasurer's office.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, but now, this, what I'm doing now is really kind of half and half, because it's the AP wires that need enter. That's AP, that's clerk's business. However, I gotta have that in order to do the bank recs, which is treasurer's business.
Right, yeah, I just didn't know if we needed to be trying to divide up that on our end, what we're paying, or where we're pulling the money out of to pay you. I didn't know if we needed to divide that up, so.
Yeah, I, the, uh, the treasurer was always short-staffed, so she had plenty of money in her budget, so I just figured, I don't know, I just figured that's why they were taking it out of there, I don't know. And I was really in the treasurer's office most of the time.
Yes, right, physically in there, yeah, so.
I mean, I did some, some, uh, daily balance training in the clerk's office and a little bit of AP training, but not, not really, that's not really where the majority of my time was.
Yeah, that's fine, I was just trying to think ahead to what, you know, what a possible scenario would look like, a discussion.
Yeah, 'cause like this week, going and training the sheriff's office on AP batches, that's really clerk. Um, uh, you know, the AP, all the AP stuff, that's really clerk. Um, so-
Yeah.
But I still do have some, you know, uh, yeah, this month, uh, I gotta work with Becky on the tax roll balancing. Uh, you know, and just whatever other odd things, little things that come up over there, so.
Sure, yeah, I was just, like I said, I was just trying to think ahead on something that may or may not come up, that, how to work through that when we get there.
Yeah. Yeah, how are you guys, how are you guys wanting to do it?
All right, that's all I had for you. I do appreciate you, I bumped into you in the parking lot the other day, and I thank you for taking the time to talk to me.
Oh, oh, yeah. Uh, I'm a sheriff.
Yeah.
If you wanna, if you wanna ask and talk, I'm always available to, like, I'll let you know, you know, what's going on and whatever I'm doing at the time, or whatever I got going on, that's gonna be happening. So, that I can remember at the time, keep that in mind.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Talk to you later, bye.
Okay, bye.
Okay, just a couple things. Okay, we're down to payroll bills. On the payroll, for a while, I wasn't approving payroll because I still have concerns.
Yeah.
Um, moving forward, I know we have things we're working on to, uh, as we move into Pay Corps, hopefully that, we're gonna get all this stuff figured out. For me, these reports are not enough data. I'm still gonna approve it for today, but in the past, we've had like, um, labor distributions and some other reports that have a lot more detail. And for me, down the road, I, I've gotta get back to having some reports that have more detail like that. So hopefully, um, once we get moved on to Pay Corps, we'll get some other things. So I'm going to approve this hesitantly, but I'm going to approve it.
Not quite under protest, but hesitantly.
Long-term, this is not enough information for me to feel comfortable, however, that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I do not on, on this, no.
'Cause I also noticed on the reports, like, we have page one of ten, page one of ten, page one of ten, page one of nine, page one of ten, page one of ten, so I, I feel like there's other pages that we're not getting.
Well, yeah, and I am-
So, and I've not taken time to learn the reports. Knowing we were moving away from this company, I was like, I'm not gonna invest my time learning what reports I need, so I've just been waiting.
Well, yeah, and so there's a lot to this process that I, like, I'm not involved in it, so I don't know the ins and outs of it, so to speak, but, uh, I know there's frustrations within departments about the process, and I'm looking forward to the process being streamlined and smoothed out, uh, you know, like, similar to what you're talking about, where you get all the information you want, they're getting the information they want, everybody's, you know, happy with the process.
Yes, and that I can be comfortable approving payroll. So, do you have any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I would move to approve payroll for payday eleven-five, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. And then I gotta take a little bit of time to go through it. Where's this to?
Uh, I got one for you whenever you get down to it.
You have a question?
Yeah.
What's the vendor?
Uh, thirty-nine fifty?
Well, give me the name, she has them by alphabetical.
Firestone Complete. Tires, pursuit tires, cop tires? All of them. Yeah, you gotta buy certain tires, but I'd like to, you know, like, to try to keep that money within the county if we can, on things like that.
Yeah, you know, I wonder, yeah, I don't know why I'd be over there unless it's someone who lives over there.
Possibly, and that could be, yeah.
Yes.
As a, not, maybe not an iron-clad rule, but as a rule of thumb, you know, general, best case, best practices.
Yeah, keeping the, uh, business here and the sales tax here.
Yeah, unless they had to have them that day, I could see local vendors not having them on hand, but-
Right.
But if, you know, in my little brain, if you're funded by local tax, you'd wanna put that local money back, local. Keep the dollars spinning in the county. Tempest, you guys, the treasurer's office was the only one that was using key staffing, is that correct? You guys have not dabbled in that, have you?
No.
Okay. Are we in a contract with them, how long was that for, do you know? For them to provide services to us, or was it as needed?
Well, you just, it's as needed, so you sign a contract with them, but then when you have a need, you tell them your position opening and give them a description, and then they search candidates and they vet them, interview them, and then say, okay, here are some viable people for your position.
As need or whatever, I didn't know if it was all the way.
And then you can, I, now, at that point, there may be, if you finally get a candidate from there, there may be a few weeks that you have to guarantee that you're gonna be using them or something, there's terms for that, I don't know.
I can't remember.
And then at the end of it, you can hire them, you know, independently.
Yeah, which it sounds like has, has happened up there, so.
In cases where you really just need someone quick, you know, they do all that-
It's a stopgap, yeah.
They do all that, like, it is a stopgap, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, one more, are you, or are you there?
I don't know, what name is it?
Uh, T-T-N-T Salvage?
What's it called?
T-T-N-T. That's L.
Tobin.
Mm-hmm. That one's an odd one, so maybe we had to tow the cruiser in there to get tires to the car or something, rather, which would make more sense.
Okay, where, um, what's the date? Date, I can't read that. Nine-seven-four-seven?
Seven, you know, two, seven, I mean, nine-two, nine-seven, something like that, anyway.
I don't know, it's a, it doesn't say what, oh, there's stuff down there, you can't read. I think it was towed.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I wonder if that was part of the deal? Oh, I can, I can follow up with Chris on that, just asking about it.
I don't see statements on here from, um,
Yeah, one of these days, we'll have to have a bigger trash can back here so I can go clean out all these drawers here, they're already filled up.
Yeah, there's a lot of paperwork. And you're like, what do I need and what do I don't?
Well, yeah.
And then you get rid of something and then down the road, you're like, mm.
Oh, I just had that, we're not good. Ryan says they're pouring the deck on the bridge there.
He sent pictures, did you get him?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, he sent me some pictures. At first, I thought he was sending a picture of sunrise, 'cause there was this beautiful, and then the next one's a bridge, I'm like, oh, I think he's sending me-
Concrete, yeah, same thing, yeah.
How much responded, beautiful sunrise. Oh, yeah, the concrete did.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have any seats for this? Topeka Auto Glass.
Yeah, I said they started pretty early today.
I'm not, I don't know if I understand this one. This one's got, there's like a sheet that says Topeka Auto Glass, so here's Topeka Auto Glass for eighty dollars from August. But it says paid date, April, April, July, August, and it looks like these have been, they've repaid those dates, but I don't see, like, there's no receipt that goes with those. I don't know what they would be for.
On this listed, this from here, it's all.
That's a different thing.
Oh, okay.
This is Topeka Auto Glass, so I was wondering why there was a, a invoice thing in here? 'Cause there's no receipts that go with that. I guess my question is, on something like this, I don't know why this is in here.
Yeah, I-
But if they were paid, if they were paid previously, we would need to know that, and we would s- I mean, if they've been paid and now they're just coming to us?
Right.
We're gonna need to know that, 'cause to me, this looks like we're gonna approve one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars, but there's no receipt. The only thing that goes with it is one of the transactions.
Okay.
So, I guess that's a question for Linda, that if she, if, if there are things that have been paid but hadn't been approved by us, and now they're coming through, that's gonna need to be indicated, 'cause, or, or I'm reading this wrong, but that we either need three more of these to go with this, otherwise, I, we might be approving something that has already been approved, which would be double payment. Or these are items that came, that had been paid but never were brought to us.
Right.
Either way, we need to, we need to know what this means.
Yeah, that is a strange one on here, though, 'cause it shows that eighty dollar was a duplicate payment on the, on the actual report.
Um-
So like, the eighty dollars was a credit, and then it shows the, uh, the five-forty-two.
And I don't know what five-forty-two is. Is there a receipt for that?
Oh, that's a, it's Topeka Auto Glass vendor.
There's no, there's no receipt for that either. So this says mighty, minus eighty dollars here, credit memo.
Yeah.
So that goes with-
Right, the duplicate. But I don't know where, then you get your five-forty-two, so it comes up with a total of forty, four-sixty-two.
Yeah, and it might have been, the other thing is, is they ran a report
Yeah.
From here to here, and if, they were looking, they might have been looking for this.
Yeah.
But that's not what this says to me, this says we're paying this amount.
Right.
So, I guess we need s-
On that, but on this, what's weird and strange is, you know, this is what's on the, the total for that vendor, you know what I mean?
And there's no rec-
Within the bills, in the AP report, so, but that just doesn't line up with the records. So that number holds no bearing for what we're looking at on this report.
Possibly.
But I don't know what's in there.
This number could be included in the total dollar amount at the end, I don't know.
For, on this report?
Yeah, I guess if it's not on there.
They'd have to add up, I mean, they'd have to.
Yeah.
But I don't know why, that, that receipts the anomaly.
And there is a one for the five-forty-two.
Correct. But it shows, I don't know, there's.
Yeah, so on something like that, those are those things that, I don't, in the past, if there's been something that's a discrepancy, we approve bills, but sometimes we take out certain things, and in this case, we don't have a receipt for that, unless it is somewhere else in here. And then who is this to, translation? Is that in here? Here's translation. This is from September. I guess that's a question, okay, you may not know this, do you know, is Linda preparing this book or is Michelle preparing this book?
That book, I believe, was prepared by Linda.
I may just, I think a question we could have her, cause I think I know what she's doing, if she's paying an old bill, cause this is from September, I think she's running a report. And if she's finding that it's been paid?
Trying to double check it, yeah.
She's, I'm not sure, like, she's got translation on here for a hundred and forty dollars from nine nine, so here's the receipt.
Yeah.
But then she has this transaction list with seven transactions from other dates.
Yeah, perhaps she's just, yeah, like I said, she might just be.
I, I'm not sure.
You know, checking off the, for lack of a pay voucher, you know, just looking for transactions and matching up transactions with dates or something.
Right, and that's what I'm needing to know is, is, is this a bill that got paid but didn't come to us? Cause if that's the case, those need to be kind of, we need that explanation, cause this just doesn't make sense. And if that's the case, it's fine, these need, like, for me, I need an indication that this is a bill that's coming through, but maybe it'd already been paid. I don't know why she's running a report that's got all these transactions on it.
I don't know, it's not Waterworld, I don't know, that's not.
So what are those called? Ledger detail? Okay. So it's on there, it's here. And there's not even a nine nine on here. Invoice nine zero six one, I don't, I don't know what this is. And maybe she's doing it to make sure it's not a duplicate, like, maybe these others got paid and then this one's left over, and she's like, okay, let's make sure we haven't paid it. And maybe this is confirmation that it hasn't been paid.
And, yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was.
It could be either one, I, my brain.
I like that explanation, that's the way I would have done it, if that was me, is, you know, you get a list out and you start checking off transactions and dates and say.
Yeah.
Cause if you don't have a voucher to match, match it up to, you're just going off transactions.
Yeah.
But I've been known to do things wrong, so.
Oh, must've been an accident, it says sent to American Family.
Well, that could be.
So, that's probably why, it's probably terrible for them.
Ouch.
So that shows it's been paid. So really, the one that we have a question on? There's, this five forty-two, there's no receipt for that.
And that's the Topeka Auto Glass for?
It is Topeka Auto Glass.
Other than that meeting, uh, next week on the twelfth, is that still a morning meeting, is that, is that correct?
Is that what?
Morning meeting, nine o'clock, okay.
What, yeah.
Okay.
It's just because the eleven.
Right, yeah, I just was trying to make sure, I'm sure I'll ask you again before we leave, but.
I'm just double checking that this one receipt isn't maybe misfiled.
And that was on the Topeka Auto Glass, right?
Yeah, so I'm going to make a note on the sheet that we signed, cause we have Topeka Auto Glass for eighty dollars credit. But. Oh, wait a minute. It's right here. I found it, we're good. It said bill to Osage County Public Transportation, so I didn't read this side over here, so we're good.
Oh, that's a different, yeah, that's a different.
Yes.
I got you.
This is the voucher, so, in the past, every bill had a voucher, and this was on top, and then the bill would be below it. And so, all your information is the same on, because it's a voucher, you know how to find exactly what you need. This is the voucher system that, like, Rogen Bridge wants to go back to this. So.
Okay, gotcha.
So it does, it's good, we're good.
So that one's okay?
We're good.
Okay.
I'm glad I double checked, I literally looked at that.
She thought she was wrong once, but it turns out she was right.
In fact, I think I proved myself wrong, because I said it wasn't in there.
Is that right?
Alright, so.
Well, I was right there with you, looking over your shoulder, I didn't see it that first time through, I, I gave up.
Alright, so I'm gonna approve the bills in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and five cents.
Second.
Did I say I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the bills? In the amount of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and five cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
I heard motion, I don't know which.
I said it, I said it terribly, and see, we're also not to say, we're not supposed to say, I make a motion, we're supposed to say, I move.
And it shouldn't pass, the motion should, should carry.
Is that, you know, the other, I've been, every time I say it, I'm like, should I say pass or carries? I need to go to class, apparently.
It'll be alright. Etiquette school or something other around here?
I'm sure there's something I could do.
Uh, there's a couple of different entities put on those government classes for small boards and things, because even though you're a small little board, you're still subject to the Cora and.
I've been to some city councils and stuff, and like, the way they run their meetings, I'm like, wow, it's impressive.
Yeah.
The people leading it, I mean, you can tell they've done it for years, and they just are really good at it. Okay, um, I think the only thing we had, we were moving the executive session with Sheriff Wells to next week, did we talk about that? And the payroll recommendations for pay dates from Paycor, we need to move that. And that's all I remember, and then I will, when you stamp the liquor license, I need to take that with me.
Okay. So if we're done, I'll take it upstairs and get it stamped and copied and bring it back down to you?
Sure, sure, I don't have anything else, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Do you have anything?
No, Tempest, is it, is Linda, I mean, is that disrupting the office or smoothing the office, is it alright?
Is what?
With Linda working with the clerk's office?
Oh, it's doing just fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got a desk set up for her, she comes in, does her thing, I'll go over and kinda check the reports and everything, cause we always put two sets of eyes on it.
Perfect.
And then give it back to her, and she continues with what she needs to do.
Very good, very good, yeah, I don't have anything else, I don't.
Okay, alright, so I need, um, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Alright.